Meeting law and it is the March twenty, no, April twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty one Board of Trustees meeting for the Seymour Public Library District. And Larry, you're in charge.
Okay. I see where you're getting the date because the date on the agenda revised agenda is March twenty third. But it is actually April twenty seventh. And so, welcome everybody and we'll begin the agenda first up is trustees education and something about intellectual freedom.
Nope, that was, I must have sent the wrong agenda then because, yeah, because that we did that and we actually have Elaine Buffington joining us.
We do, right? Oh, maybe I have the wrong one up. That could be.
I think, yeah, I think maybe Elaine Buffington is on top of the.
Yeah, that's the way, that's, I remember, yeah, and I see you Elaine, so I can see that's where you need to be. I don't know where, let's see. Okay, I'll find it, but go ahead anyway, that's first up.
Okay, very good. And so about a week ago, about a week ago, we went through the draft copy of the library district's financial statement with the Audit and Finance Committee in great detail. What I'm going to do today is do more of an overview. However, if the Board of Trustees has any questions, please feel free to interrupt me, ask the question. But I'm going to do more of a top, a top down approach here. First of all, I do really happy to plead to, to report that the audit went much smoother than last year. It's great to have Melanie back as your bookkeeper. She did a great job. I know she still has some cleanup work to do in the investment area and in some of the other areas, but she did a great job. We appreciated all of her expertise and how hard she does work for the library and she made, going through the information, much easier. So it was nice to have her back. We did have about five journal entries, which is pretty, pretty typical. However, three of them were material audit, not audit entries, which is certainly not a reflection on Melanie's ability, but more that these are technic, more technical accounting issues that we would expect to be making an entry like this, if, you know, when we see something like this. The first entry was, there was a payable for some architectural work that was found when we were doing the accounts payable search, so that was included. That was about thirty two thousand dollars. When we were reading the minutes and talking about some of your changes in your personnel policies, because of COVID, you allowed people to carry over vacation time, which had not been, which is not your typical policy. So upon further investigation and discussion, the amount was about seven, about seventy five hundred dollars. So there was a journal entry that was done for that. And the largest journal entry was really an accounting change that happened in two thousand and nineteen. There was clarification regarding what is included as a conditional grant and what would be a restricted donation. And, and what the monies that you received for the construction project that you got in advance, three hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. Melanie had that recorded as a restricted contribution. But when we looked at the contract and we also got additional information that Lisa was able to get from, from the state, it was in fact a conditional grant. The grants conditioned upon you completing that construction project. So let's say you get halfway through the construction project and for some reason, you don't complete it. That money has to go back to the state. So there's a condition of you earning that income that the project be completed. So it's, it's a little bit different than a restricted grant where you're given the money and you're, and, and there's no, they want you to use it for a particular part, but there's no condition that the money would go back to the donor if you didn't finish the project. Typically, what happens with a restricted contribution is if you don't use all the money, say, let's say you've got five thousand dollars for computers and you only used four thousand, you could go back to the grantor and say, can we use the extra thousand for some monitors that we need or for a telephone system? There's no, there's no agreement or condition that the money be returned. So it's a very fine line, yes?
A question Elaine, so is there for conditional grants, one of the reasons we had talked about it was this is such a big amount. Is there a limit, like if it's under a thousand dollars, the grant and, and say we use eight hundred of a thousand dollars, but we don't use that other two hundred? And the grant contract says we have to return any unused funds. Is that different than saying the project is completed? So we, like, we use the eight hundred here, we're giving you the two hundred back?
Yep. So, so what would happen and if that's, if those are the conditions of the grant and you used eight hundred of the thousand dollars, the two hundred dollars, you would recognize the eight hundred dollars? That is a conditional grant rather than a restricted donation. So you would, you would record the eight hundred dollars as revenue when you met the, the condition of whatever the grant said. So if it was to build, you know, a wall, when, when you finish the wall, even though you had the two hundred dollars left over and they had to go back, you'd recognize the eight hundred.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So you can see it's, it's a really, it's a technical issue. So when we, when we looked at it, I, I, as a, as a trustee, I wouldn't be concerned about this type of entry. That's what we're here for, that's, we're, we're supposed to be helping you. And when you do have questions, we, we ask that Lisa, go ahead and call us, ask us about it. Melanie is very good about contacting us when she has questions so that that we don't get to the end of the year and say, oops, you know, we really need to change the way that's been done. In, as far as our fraud interviews, we interviewed several different members as well as a board member. There are no issues to report to the, the Board of Trustees. It was a challenging year for a lot of people, working remote and especially for the library because you had to close and try to provide services somehow. But I think we, hopefully, we've made it through it. One of the items that I, I wanted to discuss when we were going through the minutes and one of the challenges for the organization is how you, how you track the money, especially the done money that's board designated, as well as restricted monies. And more, more in particular, the board, the board designated money. The board designated the funds from the done money to be used as directed by the board. So it's already been designated. And then during the year, what happened was there was a motion and I don't even think it was truly a motion that was voted on. There was discussion about taking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that money and using it for operations. So in effect, what was, what you were trying to do was designate part of your designation. But there really wasn't any clear definition of what you were trying to use it for. So for instance, if it was for operations, did that mean it could be used for anything during the year? Which I don't think was what the, the case was. In my reading the minutes, it was really meant to cover any shortfalls, but it didn't really say what the shortfall would consist of or when, when a shortfall. So my, my suggestion is when you do these resolutions, make sure that they're very clear and definitive because that's going to give the direction to Melanie and to Lisa of how to do the accounting for those. You know, because it becomes very, it becomes very muddied, it's very confusing of what's really, what the intention is. So my example was, so let's say you, you knew that you're going to have a sixty thousand dollar shortfall for, for two thousand, for two thousand and twenty. The board resolution would be, we're going to designate, we're, we're going to utilize part of the designated done funds of sixty thousand for cash flow purposes and then allow that money to be transferred over into the unrestricted or undesignedated monies into your bank account. So rather than set a little pocket aside that you really don't know what you're supposed to be using it for, give it a clear, clear definition of what you want to use it for. So if you want something, let's say you're, you're planning on using it for part of, for part of the children's room. How much and what it's used for, so the kind of like the who, what, why, where, when? Does that make sense?
Just a question, I think we're using some of that money to balance our budget for this coming year.
But see again, what does that mean? It's, it's, it's not clear enough and how, and how much?
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
Do we have an amount allocated, do we, do we not Lisa, is, is like a hundred and fifty thousand or something?
No, we, the Finance Committee, when we talked about the expected shortfall back in November, December, I anticipated it would be around eighty seven thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I don't know if anybody, I don't think anybody was there who's in this meeting, but Joe said, oh, Ellen, no, you might not be, have been there. Yeah, so Joe had said, no, we have a lot of cash, we don't need to do that. We don't need to say we're going to use that. So we never did. Prior to that, when Mike Tripani was on the board, we did have that motion that Elaine was talking about where we said, you know, we know that the foundation isn't going to give us our expected, like what we were used to. So we're going to set aside two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that should get us through, you know, two years if we needed it. But we, because of the problems with how the motions were made, there were some, some motions that were in conflict that last year when Buffington and Holland did the audit, it's, it's as if that two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that we talked about, we just, it's designated designated funds already, so it didn't, it didn't put it in a separate bucket. Did I say that right Elaine?
Mm-hmm, so I think, I think you can see what the confusion is, how, how it becomes confusing when, with what's in the minutes and what the intention is. It would be clear that when you're, when you come to a cash shortfall in your case, you designate, you make a motion, I motion that we transfer fifty thousand dollars of the board designated funds to cover our shortfall, our cash shortfall. So that's really, it's very definitive. And then what happens is then the money can be transferred out of the done money into your general operating money because you've given that directive.
So we won't need, I mean, we won't know if we need to use that money and we would only, we would only tap into that by board motion, is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
I mean, even though it's a line item in our budget, we don't, we're not, we don't do anything, we don't do anything. You don't, you don't draw anything out of that account until or unless it's needed. And then only by board action.
By board action because it is board designated.
Yeah.
It's board controlled.
Got it, okay, thanks.
And have we done that of any of this money, the two thousand, two hundred and twenty five thousand, as of yet?
No.
I didn't think we had.
No.
And Elaine, you said two hundred and fifty, I believe it was two hundred and twenty five thousand.
Two twenty, two hundred and twenty five thousand.
To be very precise.
Yeah.
Okay, and I do remember when we made that resolution, but I do not remember using any of it Lisa.
Right, so, and that's where it becomes confusing is when, when do you transfer out of that two twenty five? What, at what point?
Yeah.
And, and as a board, you want to make sure that you can control that, that there's, so that Lisa, so that Lisa and Melanie, Melanie know exactly when and how much. Does that, does it help? I know it's very confusing, but that was, that was probably the biggest thing that we want, you know, I wanted to make sure that we talked about a little bit.
And Lisa, you would come to the Finance Committee to say that this is time for us to transfer this amount of money. And we would approve that first before the board. Yes?
I think it's, I think you could make a recommendation, the Finance Committee can make a recommendation to the board, but I, I really think it needs to be the full board needs to vote on taking money out of a board designated fund.
That's correct.
Right.
So Elaine, how does, let, let's use this example here where, you know, at the end of the audit, we have a seventy seven thousand dollar shortfall. So is it appropriate to say, for the board to say, we would, we want to transfer seventy seven thousand dollars out of Mr. Dunn's board designated money to cover this cash shortfall? And, and I get, you know, I get mixed up because of the different years, right? So we, what does that look like when this, this is as of December thirty first, but here we are at the end of April? What, what happens then?
That's, that's exactly what you would do is, is now that you know what the number is and if you do see a shortfall in cash flow up for your operations, your cash flow, yes, you do exactly that. And then, and then it's, and then it's okay to keep track on the side. You know, you, you knew you were going to keep, use two twenty five, but that's already been designated by the board. The two twenty five really is a designation inside a designation. See, you see how confusing it gets for, you know, you don't really need to designate, designate something inside a designated fund, it's, it's already designated. So then alls you would do is say, we're going to, you know, we, we authorize twenty two, or, you know, seventy one thousand dollars to be transferred out of the done money to the general operating fund.
So, so the motion we made is essentially redundant. Right?
Yes.
Right, got it, okay. Okay.
If you need me to put the, the audit on the screen, just let me know Elaine or any of the board members, I have it, if it's easier.
I'm looking at it, but.
Okay, so getting into the, to the financial statement itself, if you start on page three, talking about, you know, talking about cash, you'll, you know, the first thing you notice is that your cash is two million one hundred and seventy six thousand. You know, it's up, it's up one million thirty four thousand, but what's happened here is the cash, the investments that were in a long-term CD actually got moved into cash and cash equivalents. So as you're looking at the financial statement, it looks like you have lots of cash there, but a lot of that, a good portion of that, one million six hundred and forty thousand dollars of it is, at the end of the year, is designated. So overall, your financial, your total assets increased by three hundred and thirty nine thousand, which, which really, during a period of time as we have right now, that's, that's a great thing. The re, one of the main reasons why is you receive that conditional grant advance of three hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars. We go over to the income statement, a statement of activities. You'll see in the total that you're, you had a loss for the year or a negative change in that assets of seventy seven, seven, seventy seven thousand five twenty seven. So this is where you might want to say, okay, is there anything unusual in there? Is there anything that was planned or budgeted? Compare it to what your intention was in regards to your budget and say, okay, at this point, we know we're, we're going to have a, a cash shortfall and we want to, we want to transfer seventy five thousand or eighty thousand dollars out of our designated funds into our general operating. Does that make sense? Okay, so if we look at what happened during the year, it's kind of like what you, you almost would expect during this, this time. You did, your grants were down from a hundred and twenty four thousand to fifty four thousand for, during the year. Your, your savior was the, the property taxes that actually went up from eight hundred and twelve thousand to eight hundred and thirty thousand. Your, your gifts from the previous year, the previous year, two thousand and nineteen was really an unusual year because that's the year that you received the, the final payout of the done, of the done money. So as we look at two thousand and twenty, it's, I don't, I don't want to say it's, it's revenue wise, it's a, a down year because of your COVID operation or what, what you weren't able to do for COVID, but it doesn't affect you as much as maybe some of the other organizations because you receive a, a constant stream of funds from your library taxes. Under your expenses, your expenses were down as well, they were about a million thirty three thousand. They're down to nine, nine hundred and ninety seven thousand. The main areas of, of decrease in your expenses were payroll and related library supplies, which you, you didn't need some of those items and, and you were trying to cut back so that you could save some, some funds. One of the things, you know, now that I'm, I'm looking at this a little bit with a different, a different eye, we were talking, we were really talking about the year your, your total amount being down seventy seven thousand. But that's with your donated, your restricted donations. So if I was a board member, I guess I would really focus on the ninety thousand is really what your operationally down. You see where I'm, see what I'm looking at? Okay, because that's, that's really, you, you receive some restricted monies and they has to be spent for particular purposes in that other column. So the amount that you're really down in operations is ninety thousand six thirty eight.
Even though the thirteen one eleven, that, what you're saying is, is essentially designated or needs to be spent for some, because it's, 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 most of it is from the grants?
It's restricted, it's restricted by the donor, the donor has told you what to spend that, those funds for.
Right.
So my, so carrying on here from Larry's point, should, should we be able to say if we had twenty thousand dollars that came in grant with restrictions, that we would show program services, we'd have to break that out to say twenty thousand? Because right now, we, we spent the grant money doing what we needed to do, but we're not showing it. And it's in the wrong.
Not at this time, right, it's, it's, it's not in that column.
It's not in that column under expenses, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So why is it not, but you, Lisa, you, you said that we are, that we have spent it?
I'd have to look and see exactly what the grants are, like, so if it was the Everett Grant that we don't get the check until December for six thousand dollars, we haven't spent it yet. But it crossed the year, right? So we'll be, we were spending it in two thousand and twenty one. And then that's also one of my questions Elaine, back to the whole conditional grant. So part of this conditional revenue recognition grant thingy, we got, we, we got the money, but it's not like a profit and loss, right? It's not going to show that it's here, it has to sit over here where we're not looking at it, but we're going to be spending it.
Yes.
And so we might show, back to your point, we might show operational losses because we can't recognize the revenue until the project is completed.
Well, in the case of the, the grant, that grant advance, that's all being spent for improvements to the library. So those items aren't going to be showing up on your income statement, but on your balance sheet as construction in progress.
Okay.
So you're not going to see that as a decrease, but, but it's definitely something to consider because didn't you, didn't you state that you were going to use some of the, some of the done money as the matching portion of that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's where you would need a motion. So when, once you know, you know what portion of, that you need as a match. So let's say you need to take fifty thousand dollars and that's going to be your match. That's where the motion's going to come into play, where you say, I, you know, I make a motion that we utilize fifty thousand dollars of the done money as the match, you know, as the match for the construction loan. And at that point, that's when you would transfer the, the money from the done money into your general operating account to be spent.
Okay.
All these things have made the library's accounting much more complicated than what it was three years, two, two to three years ago. Money always complicates things, makes it nicer, but it also adds complication.
Better to deal with these complications, I think.
It sure is, it's, it's a good problem to have.
You're to deal with these complications. So with that ninety thousand shortfall, I know this is like a snapshot in time essentially because we're, we're in April now, we're four months, almost five now into the year. Do we need to do anything? I mean, I assume our cash flow is still okay and we're still, we're still operating even though this, this is indicating a ninety thousand dollar loss.
That is for last year, but I think, you know, I guess we're, I'm using this as an example of what you can look, look at on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis to determine what you might need for operations and, and how your, your cash shortfall might happen.
I see, okay. Thank you.
Okay. As, as far as any questions on the statement of activities, we're getting into a lot of other good things. As far as the rest of the financial statement, I wasn't going to go through it in detail unless you have specific questions. We did go through it, you know, like I said, in, in great detail with the Finance Committee. And typically, I don't know if in the reports, the Finance Committee would make a recommendation to approve this.
We did.
Okay, you did.
We did make that recommendation.
I do want to, there's one, one area that I'd like to just talk about since we're talking about cash. If we can go, let me find the, the page in the notes that I'd like to just review with you.
Page fifteen.
Yeah, that's it. Page fifteen. So this really, and note six. So we've talked about how, how high your cash account is, but there's a lot of restrictions on that. So this, this footnote really details that out really well for you. So you can see that your total financial assets are two million one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But then down below in this chart, you'll see that, see what the restrictions on those funds are. So if you look, you only have ninety four thousand dollars really available for operations at the end of the year. Which when you have a loss like you did this year, that gets eaten up pretty quickly. So as you have, you're, you're starting to use your reserves that you've had as cash reserves. Now, what's Lisa, what's a, what's a monthly or what's a weekly payroll run?
It's bi-weekly, it's about twenty thousand.
Okay, so you can see if you're not getting tax revenues in or if you, if you don't, if you're, and you're not doing fines any longer, how quickly ninety four thousand dollars would be used just in payroll? Do you, does this board meet monthly or?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So maybe this is something that might be helpful if you had Melanie do on a, a little cash flow for you, so you can see where you stand.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
I will bring it back to the Finance Committee too, this discussion, okay, about the cash flow next month.
Okay.
I have another question for you Elaine. So the, the budget that we work with is, it's a tool that we use to say, this is the money that came in and this is how we're going to spend it. Different organizations have different rules and feelings about amending the budget. And I wanted to just get your perspective. And I wanted to just get your perspective. So a lot of times, we don't know that we're getting a grant. And then, you know, we applied for it, but we, we don't know, so it's not in our budget. And then we find out we got it and the, that line on our profit and loss where it's comparing actual to budget, it'll be zero. Could we, is it an issue to amend the budget to say, oh, look, we're getting fifteen thousand dollars for this summer reading program Rosen Grant? Or maybe grants are hard because it's a whole conditional revenue thing. But if, if we know, if we find out that there's a big change in something to make that adjustment, is that common, not common? Do you have recommendations?
My, my feeling is a, a budget is, is set as a, as a guideline. And so, and it's what you expect for the year. Unless it's required, now some, some organizations have to amend their budgets so that they can get additional funding from their funding sources. So they do have to do a lot of budget amendments. But most organizations don't need to do that. But what, you can still track it because you'll see that the money is there and then it's a comment as to why, why that amount, that why that revenue is up and why those expenses are up. Typically during a year, I don't, unless it's real, something really significant, I wouldn't recommend amending budgets because then you kind of lose your comparative. What did you expect your year to be? And how did it actually turn out and what were the changes?
I think the Finger Lakes Library System, I think they, they review their budget in July. And it's just a six months in and then they amend if needed, you know, so it was just a question that I had because I keep hearing different things.
It, it really goes by the organization because sometimes there's expenses that happen at the end and don't happen at the beginning. People see that, oh, we haven't used that Monday money, let's amend the budget. Well, that's because it happens in the second part of the year is when you spend those funds.
Thank you.
We have not amended our budget in the past.
Would that be, would, would amending your budget be a, a, an concern as, since you're a taxing district because you've set the budget and that's what the tax funds are based on? I don't, I don't know that.
I don't know, but, uh, I mean, I could look into it more. I know that the tax district vote on a change in the levy, which is part of a broader budget. But then how do you account for the fact that we, you know, again, it's unexpected. I'm thinking more about the unexpected revenues and then the related expenses that go along with it because grants are pretty much always restricted. They, here's the money, do this with it. Here's the money, do this with it. So that's, it's just sometimes every month, we're looking at all of these statements and it's easy to lose track. Like, why, why is that so high again? What happened here? And it just would be easier to say, oh, well, that was that fifteen thousand dollars that we got in and look, we, you know, it's here it is. And yes, it, now we're budgeting fifteen thousand dollars because that's what we got to do this project and we're going to do this project. But it's, it doesn't matter to me. I just wanted to be clear and make sure I understood what is best practices.
It's going to go by the organization, you know, what, what, and, and what the board, what the board and, and you as a leader feel.
Thank you.
I think in my experience, I think the only time I've ever had budget amended is when there's a serious cash flow problem. And so you're not, you're not trying to spend more money. What you're trying to do is tighten your belt. And so, you know, equipment, you know, purchases, that sort of thing may have to be, that were budgeted, may have to be reduced because the revenue isn't, isn't showing up. So that, that's the only time I've ever seen a budget. I, in my experience, I mean, the only time I've ever adjusted a budget.
Okay, that helps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Elaine.
Okay, the nine nine, the nine ninety is also done. And that is due to be filed on seventeenth of May. So if there's any changes or adjustments, let me know so that we can get that filed.
The nine, nine ninety is a report that goes to the state.
It goes to the IRS.
IRS, excuse me.
IRS, yeah, that's IRS reporting form.
Thank you. It's not the report that we do. All right, thanks, just to be clear.
Yeah.
It actually, and this may not be important at all in there, but I did notice that you referred to the Board of Directors.
You mean as the?
The governing body. Yeah, I, I think you are the board.
Board of Trustees.
Uh, in the, oh, what, as I was speaking? Okay, which note, which footnote, we'll, we'll make sure that that matches.
I'm sorry, I don't have it printed in front of me, but when I looked through it earlier, I just happened to notice that.
It's no.
Towards the back.
It's page ten, it's under, I saw it under net assets without donor restrictions in the third paragraph.
It was a, I think a narrative that just referred to the Board of Directors.
Yes, I see that, yeah.
So they are.
Yeah, most organizations are Board of Directors.
The foundation folks would be the Board of Directors.
Yes, so we can change that.
Right.
I'm going to just want to check, as I'm here, I want to check one more spot where it would be typically.
I was going to ask you if you wanted to do a search. Just search, word search for it.
The other area would be on note seven and, and it doesn't reflect that, so.
I had one question about note one under organization where it says voters in the city of Auburn and the towns of Owasco, Senate and Fleming. Is it important here to say that it's only the portions of Senate and Fleming that fall within the Auburn School District boundaries? It's not the entire towns.
If you, if this, it can reflect anything that you feel is.
Yeah, it should reflect that.
Okay. If you want to give me the, the wording.
I'll, I'll email it to you.
Yep. Other questions or comments?
Sounds like we're all set then.
Thank you.
Elaine, thank you very much.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate the work and is very, very informative and, and very thorough. So thank you.
Hey, good. Well, I'll let you on with the rest of your meeting and if there's anything else, let Lisa know before we produce it, okay? Thank you.
All right, I know. Um, I actually do have the corrected agenda in front of me, so. Thank you. I was thinking, I just, just opened up the wrong file. All right, so we are tabling the trustee education, so that's a good thing. And I, I just encourage anybody, if you have additional questions about the financial audit, that get, get those questions out as, as soon as possible. I know that we have approval as one of our action items. I suppose we could do that. There are just a couple of minor edits as far as I know, so we'll, we'll get to that. We do have a consent agenda and the strategic planning on the consent agenda has been omitted. That has, that was not submitted, correct? And so the, the consent agenda then consists of minutes of March twenty third, April twenty one, twenty twenty one Director's Report and then the Finance Committee Report. So the consent agenda.
I just have to make one comment. Lisa, thank you for the Director's Report because it really helps us understand what's going on and thank you for the work. Thank you very much for the Director's Report. Okay? Super.
Motion then to accept?
Motion. Okay.
The second. I didn't see Ginny, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I guess by raising your hands, we probably need to unmute because it's being recorded. But we did get a unanimous approval. Those opposed? And so hearing none, we'll move on then. Motion approved. Okay, action items then, the financial audit. Well, someone like to make a motion then to accept the financial audit? Okay, now I would suggest that that be, um, the motion be as, as, with, I mean, those are minor edits, so I, I think it's pretty much the, the heart of it is, is intact, right? Yeah, but Linda, I guess you made the motion. Who, who had the second?
I will second.
Okay. So yeah, so I, I, I think it's, it's, it's pretty thorough. I guess it concerns me a little bit to see, concerns me quite a bit to see a ninety thousand dollar loss and, you know, showing on the books. And so I think as, as board members, we do have to be diligent in, in terms of our review of monthly reports, financial reports to see that, that we're still on track. Because the ninety four thousand dollars in cash is, is, goes pretty quickly, for sure. Okay, any, any comments or questions about the audit?
Is it my understanding that we are going to see if Melanie can do a cash flow report like on a monthly basis to have for our, our board meetings to kind of keep?
I will ask her to do that, yes.
Yeah.
That would help.
That, that's a good point, Dawn, thank you, yeah. Okay, motion to accept and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, the nine ninety? That is the tax exempt form?
I have a question on that, where it says to approve it, but we haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Did it come through in an attachment?
I thought I had sent it as an attachment.
Great, great.
I can receive it.
I haven't.
I would, I would have too. I must not have printed that one out.
It's really thick and so I will.
Probably why I didn't print it out.
I can, I have a printed copy here if you want to review it here.
That's fine. As long as I've got it, I just, for some reason, that was one, probably because of the length, I didn't print it out.
I wanted to mention that you can cheat and, and I've done this before. You can Google how to read a nine ninety online and it will tell you the important things to look for. Just, I have used that before, so.
I've read them for twenty two years, so.
Me too, but sometimes it's like, okay, down to the meat and potatoes of it. The other thing I wanted to just ask, maybe this was a different time and a different organization, but is the nine ninety something at one point we had to individually sign off on years ago? No? Okay. See? Need to Google. Okay, thank you.
Withdraw my question.
Essentially, we sign off by, by approving it.
Yes.
Mary, we'll need your signature. When I get the official copy, you know, it's still in a draft form.
Well, if it's in a draft form, are there going to be additional edits or is this?
That's what, if there was a, if there was a question that came up when the board is reviewing.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, it's good to me. Anybody, any thoughts or questions, a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve now that I've seen.
Second, Nancy. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Carried unanimously? I think I heard a late I in there, but I think that was, that was approving, correct? None opposed, so it's carried unanimously, okay. The twenty twenty one financial statements and claims.
For March.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I'm the spokesman because no one else is here. The Finance Committee met a week ago and went through the statements and as far as we're concerned, they're on track. I don't know whether they're keeping track of whether there's a deficit or not. But we recommend that we approve the financial statements for March. Does anyone have a question?
We need a second to the motion for somebody?
I'll second it.
Okay, Linda, okay, now you can ask questions.
Sorry.
Yep. The, the, on page three, there's a net ordinary income, it says of minus seventy seven thousand eight hundred. Is that a concern at this point?
I, I, I don't have that in front of me either.
There's net income of minus eighty thousand altogether on, on page three of eight.
So is that shortfall carried over? The dog answered.
Two barks means yes or no? I don't know which.
Right.
I, yeah, I guess I, I just asked that we keep, keep a really close eye on that and maybe at the next meeting, we'll have a little better idea of cash flow.
Yeah, okay.
Part of it is you're looking at only March, you're not looking January through March. And last year, we had that new revenue recognition rule where we used to say, let's take the tax money that comes in and divide it by twelve. So we'd have some, a, a stable revenue every month. But now we don't. We recognize the whole eight hundred and thirty thousand in January. So I think it kind of creates this. Here we are in March and it's saying, your, your net ordinary income is saying, what's the money that came in minus what you spent in the month of March? And so we, we brought in that big chunk, we recognized it back in January. So yes, it's important to look at what happened in the month, but I think in terms of the net ordinary income, it's more true to look at January through March or you look at that because of the timing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to do then is to reconcile the, the next two columns. A, a net income or I don't know which, which do we want to look at, the net ordinary income? Six oh three and the budget was two oh eight. So how do we, how do we compare those two and then understand where we are on budget? I guess maybe that's my question.
I think that the January through March, it's a straight, like adding those months together. Whereas the annual budget just.
Is that the entire, I mean, we're, we're not four hundred thousand on the, on the plus side for the year budget wise, right? So I guess.
Yeah.
Understand the columns and how they, they relate to one another.
I don't have an answer.
Yeah, it's super confusing. I know that when we do talk it. I know that when we do talk in finance, that that's one of the questions that comes up is, do we look at net ordinary income or net income? And we tend to look at net ordinary income because depreciation.
Yeah.
It's not, so the net ordinary income line. But the idea of how does this relate to the budget is is the bigger question. So let me do some checking and. Get back to you.
Okay, I guess, you know, the finance committee and I'm okay with approving this personally, but I'm just a little confused as to how to understand. Where we are holistically. If if we're reporting from January to March. Net income of six hundred three thousand. And our annual budget says that we should receive two that two hundred eight thousand. Is the annual budget then, does does that take our tax money and divide by twelve?
It might. It it might be.
Right, but then recognizing the total amount because we received it in January.
Right, and that's I need to talk to Melanie about what are the formulas in the annual budget cell right there?
Yeah, okay.
Got your warranty.
Sorry, yeah, I'm sure somebody needs a new car warranty. Okay, well, all right, anyway, that I I I could just be clarified that that would that would be helpful to me. I I'd love to see. What that means.
I could do that.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else, any other questions or comments about the uh financial report? Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously? And we then move on to claims.
Can I interrupt for just a minute?
Yes.
So I have to leave in five minutes?
Yes.
Lisa, do you want me to talk for like, it's only gonna take about two minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we we still have a quorum to approve the claims.
Do we?
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Strategic planning, yeah.
Yeah, so um, I just wanted to bring the board up to date on what's happened since we last talked about strategic planning. So there was a Slice team that followed after um, Malina's presentation and it was Jackie, Lisa, Ross and myself. And um, we have met and we have zoomed and well, actually we zoomed and we talked a lot on back and forth. We have, we have reached a consensus, I think. We just, I don't have it in writing here, but you're going to get it the next couple of days. So the idea that Malina gave us was to have our team. Work on the mission, the vision and the values. Talking about the a lot of the issues that we discussed during that training or that workshop. And um, also just thinking about the library, we we went through some exercises, so. We want to share that with the board and with the staff. Ahead of meeting together with Malina and um. So you have the chance to look at it and think about it. Um, and maybe. Play with it a little bit. And then when we get together with Malina, not during the same day as a board meeting, but another day. Um, we will wrap this up in one dedicated space of time under her guidance. So um. I'm not gonna go into the, I really was talking about the process right now. It looks like a lot of the things that we touched on are still important elements in our consensus, but. We do wanna share that with you. So. The next step after we send this out to you would be to talk to Malina um, and the board and staff about. Finding a convenient day and time. And Lisa, I think we were talking about. Within the next month, right? So this can be wrapped up by our next meeting. And then um, we also have talked a little bit about. Board retreat and we have a board governance meeting coming up. I believe it's on May thirteenth for many members there. So that's where we are. We have developed a consensus. And we will send that out to you so you could have a chance to look at that before we meet. And Lisa and I will um. Share the information about the details of our, we'll probably give you some choices or. You know, bounce back and forth about when it would work best.
Great.
We don't have a date yet, right, Lisa?
No. We don't have a date.
Thank, thanks Jenny. Um, I appreciate the work that you folks have done to get us this far, so we'll uh, we'll be able to wrap this up. It looks like in in pretty short order.
Thank you. I'm sorry I talked out of turn.
Uh, that's that's okay. I do wanna get the uh, just uh, the claims because we do need.
Okay.
So um, a motion. To accept the twenty, March twenty twenty one claims? From someone? Ellen? Second?
A second.
Okay, uh, Jenny, okay, uh, any questions about the claims, any comments? Say all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed and carried unanimously. And Jenny, and I guess Meg, you have to leave early also, so. We'll keep going here as as long as we can, stay on with as long as we can. We'll try to wrap this up soon.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I know, that that's that's fine. The um, you know, financial audit reports usually tend to tend to go a lot longer and make the meetings, you know. But at any rate, we'll 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 carry on, but I don't think there are any other action items. Well, oh, yes, there is. Officer, yes, I added that to the agenda and and then was gonna gloss right over that. Uh, Lisa, any any comments about it?
Um, a couple of uh trustees asked about the wording for the education. Why it was saying regional authority or New York State registered. College or university and I asked civil service and the response was. It could be either whatever that state's regional authority is. Um, so I guess they just want to make sure it's not a fly by night. I do, degree, I guess, you know, but it's some, somebody's overseeing and that it's a legitimate.
Unlike Phine- online Phoenix University.
Exactly. So it doesn't have, so that was um, that was it.
It's recognized by New York State Education Department, in other words.
Right. Right.
They can be from some other whatever state.
Whatever their regional.
Association, yeah.
Like there are a few good uh universities uh across the country, so.
There are.
Right.
Yes, Larry.
So uh, okay, so is there anything else then? Uh, you've had a chance to look this document over. Do I have a motion to uh approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
And a second?
I will second.
Ellen, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So uh, we have next on the agenda, the Nancy. The library.
Very quickly, nothing to report because. It's such an easy report. Um, we are actually meeting tomorrow morning at nine thirty with Elaine. To do just what we did with um Elaine today. So um, but we are doing only that. We are also uh, going to be scheduling a meeting for uh, May. So within the next two, three weeks. We will be meeting to hear from Bill Light and to discuss any number of things that we have just been.
Including our favorite topic. Having to do with roofs.
Larry, yeah, right.
All right, all right, great.
Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Nancy.
Mm-hmm, you're welcome.
All right, um, so we heard from uh Jenny on strategic planning, uh, discussion item twenty twenty two budget.
Um, so I presented a draft of a twenty twenty two budget to the finance committee. Joe Runkel had asked me to break it out by cost center, which I thought meant by department. Which is something we've never done, but I think it was important to do that. So I took my um, best stab at trying to split up costs that we haven't necessarily broken apart. There's still pretty good shortfall and that's I I cut materials. I did not cut staff. Staff is, you know, I added the positions that I added, so um. I really don't have any other spots that I could do a lot of cutting and um. I I just, we need to have that discussion. So I I think it's a bigger discussion. I wanted to let you know that. Finance committee did look at it. Um, and I'd like to have a separate meeting where we can just talk about. Twenty twenty two. Oh, oh, I did include um, asking for um, like a twenty four thousand dollar increase to the tax levy. It's within the parameters of the two percent and doesn't require the super majority. Um, and that's of course a board decision if we wanted to include that.
I don't think we have a choice. Uh, I think we absolutely have to do that.
Yeah.
I agree.
So there's just, I I, you know, Larry, you've said it and others have said it, but we're looking down the road and we can't. We can't rely on Mrs. Dunn's money for operations. So how do we close that gap? And I I I'm out of ideas.
Maybe there are, is is the uh, can the Finger Lakes Library folks be of any assistance and. Suggesting other revenue sources or other ways to generate revenue?
We could certainly talk to them.
I mean, I I don't, I mean, we're we're not the only library in the system that is probably that is experiencing a shortfall, I'm sure. Maybe there's, you know, collective um. You know, co- co- collective experience that might help us uh, at least explore other options for revenue.
Right.
Cause I mean, you know, if you don't have revenue, then you have to cut expenses and you're saying you're really up against the wall right now in terms of revenue.
So, so that's where we are. And I just wanted to give you an update and I wanted to have um. Just have a separate discussion about about budgets and and you know, where, what your thoughts are looking ahead.
Okay, I'd certainly be uh, interested in participating in that discussion. I don't know if we need a full board, but um. But certainly, it would be good to have uh as many voices as as we can, even if we present options and we can do this by um. You know, by by just by email or by by texting or, you know, a meeting or a separate meeting or special meeting might be in order. At some point in the future.
Did her a little bit earlier in two thousand and twenty one. At a meeting, we did talk about other ways to raise revenue. I don't know that we had very many ideas, but we did discuss it.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Nancy, that's something uh you might want to express to the foundation as well. From the foundation.
I I think it is um, important um, in terms of our discussions. Do we repair a roof?
Yeah.
You know, do we? Support the library as we we had been, so.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Not an easy place to be right now, but but let's see what we can uh, see we can do. I mean, I think they should be aware of of the of the issue, certainly.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Right, and um. Maybe it's not an either or, but maybe there, maybe you have to.
The middle ground, yeah.
Yeah, I hate to say it, but maybe we have to rethink how to finance the roof project.
Yeah.
From the minutes. Okay, well, we'll we'll see. I mean, I I just think it's still, I mean, we're still, it's April, but uh, uh, I think it's it's important that we. That we have this discussion sooner rather than later. Okay. All right, um. Any other thoughts or questions about the budget? Moving on to our construction. Project. Children's room is in progress, or at least the demolition part is, right?
Yes, the um, asbestos is completed. Um, the asbestos abatement. I I think I just sent you, Larry, the last air monitoring.
Yeah.
A test results that we received. Um, the abatement contractor removed the decontamination unit. Chuck Bulley has concrete scheduled to be delivered tomorrow. Joe Keim is stopping by. At seven thirty tomorrow morning um, be to look at the header uh, over the picture book room that that wall. Um, now that all the plaster's down and you can see a little bit better. The other thing that I think that um, Joe needs to look at is there. I don't know if I, I think you might have gotten the email and if you didn't, I'll make sure you get it. Chuck Bulley had taken a lot of pictures. There's a lot of damage on the floors. It was uh, really choppy, the cement. And so there's some question about if there needs to be some specific kind of prep work before. They lay, before they do the concrete. And so um. Lisa Hayes' structural engineer had sent some notes.
Yes.
So.
I was, I was just gonna say that, I mean, I I know it's really convenient to have, you know, folks from Beardsley doing this, but the. The responsibility real- really uh, lies uh, with with Lisa and her consultants. So anything structural should go through there. I appreciate Joe coming out and looking at the header. But he's not the engineer of record. And so we wanna make sure we're careful about taking on responsibility ourselves. As opposed to, because we take responsibility uh, if we're not going through that proper channel.
I think Lisa is coordinating with Joe because.
Okay, then I I think that's perfect.
Because he's on site, like he's here in town and it just is easier than sending somebody from. So she's coordinating it.
Perfect, okay. The final word comes from her, then that's that's the way it needs to work. So we're happy, I'm happy with that.
Yeah. So I think, I think we're on track.
June was the target.
June thirty is a substantial completion date.
Start moving the furniture in right after that, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay. So we're still on track with that.
As far as I know, yes. I anticipate that the um, furniture company will be sending their representative out to do field measurements. In the next two weeks.
Okay.
Maybe the next week.
Yeah. And just for the info- uh, for your information from the board, for the board, uh, there were a couple of unexpected. Expenses that came up that. If you weren't aware of this, um, that some of the plaster in the um, in the hallway outside the um, history room. That was found to contain asbestos. And so that had to be removed under abatement conditions. So that's adding to the cost of the project. We do have a construction contingency. Uh, and so, you know, with it, I I think we're still in budget. I haven't, I haven't looked at it. I don't know if you have, Lisa, but we we need to examine the budget. And see where we land with that. There were also a couple of other. Uh, suggestions made by uh Bulley. To perhaps save some money and maybe, maybe we can find a way to balance all that out. So. Uh, I know there's a construction project meeting Monday, the third. Uh, I intend to uh, attend that. I don't know if anybody else's cares to join in, but um. Would like to see where we stand, so. I think it's pretty much open. I don't think there's any restriction. If anybody is interested, they they're welcome to attend. To my knowledge, I don't think there's any restriction. Do you, uh, do you know of any, Lisa?
I don't know of any restrictions, no. I think we're good.
Okay, anyway, things look good and and I think that the the Bullys, uh, you know, the folks there are doing a, doing a good job so far. Of tearing things apart. We'll see, we'll see how things go in the coast bank together again. So Lisa, the West Lobby?
We are going to have um, a call with Lisa Hayes and Paul Mays to get a timeline together for the West Lobby. Project. Um, the state. Contacted Finger Lakes Library System and has allocated more money for these projects. And so we had originally received sixty two percent of the project funds. We were requesting seventy five percent. There are some um. I I don't have the exact numbers originally. I think that might be Alan. Um, originally, it was three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated to. All of the. three hundred thousand dollars that was allocated to all of the Finger Lakes Libraries in addition to what they had. But then Christie said no, she misread something, so I don't know how much was allocated, but we did get some extra funding. So originally the grant was gonna be two hundred and twenty-one thousand, and I think we might be getting two hundred and fifty thousand, but I'm waiting for official word on that. But I think that that's the sign that it's, that the money is coming from the state and that we should schedule work with the architects to develop the bid documents. I did have to file an extension with the state for the children's room project, and I had to say what caused the delays, and I really think the, the delay really was the, the bid documents, that we were supposed to get them in June of last year and we didn't get them until January. That was a pretty significant delays, we were in a pandemic, we are in a pandemic, so I understand that that was part of it. But I, I want to be very aware of what Lisa and Paul's time is so that we don't run into that kind of delay again.
Right. Yeah, the good news is that the, the funding is, is available, or it, every indication is that it's available. We were holding back on this, going, you know, get, getting the go, giving the go-ahead until we actually got official word, but now I think it's almost official. So I think we're going to go ahead and engage the services of, of, you know, the same architect and Butler, Row, Butler, Rollin and Mays, Lisa and Paul Mays. And we'll, we'll proceed with that, with that project. So, looks good.
And then Larry and I had a conversation, we started looking at what the current grant cycle, the one that will open in June, that'll be due at the end of August. You know, what, what do you want me to write? The grant, what's our next project? So that'll be also part of our, our conversation with Lisa and Paul because we did engage them to help us strategize with with the DLD grants. And how do we phase in the different projects that we had talked about in the building condition survey and programmatic assessment? One of the things that we really, I'd like to build into the grant is updating the existing fire alarm system. That's just come up as, as we went through some of the children's room construction, that it really needs to be at a higher priority than it, than it had been. And that's really all I have in terms of construction. I really didn't know that this was gonna be my job was to be so thinking about construction. And I thought it was gonna be...
These construction projects are not considered a part of our current or last year's or next year's budget, am I right? We have to make up the shortfall for the lobby, don't we?
We, we had, we have to provide grant match.
Grant match.
And we had said at the time when I applied last summer that we would use part of Mrs. Dunn's money as the grant match.
My question, all right, super.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah. Very good.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, maybe after the next project then, Lisa, maybe you can go back to doing other, other things. Oh wait, there's an addition we're thinking about.
I know, and the parking lot and all the property.
Sure, sure, okay. All right, one thing at a time, take a deep breath.
Yep.
Our next meeting is scheduled for, where are we now, this is, we are in May, right? We're going to be in May?
Mm-hmm.
I have May, uh, let's see. Do we have it?
It happened on May twenty-fifth, that, is that the day after Memorial Day? No.
So yeah, that's what I have too, is May twenty-fifth, four o'clock. I guess we continue in Zoom until further notice.
Yes, yes, I'm waiting to hear, you know, the governor every month updates the executive order that allows the board to meet virtually, so I'll let you know if it doesn't get extended.
Okay.